I am stuck working, and there's a funeral from four to six.
Hi, good afternoon. Thanks for joining us. This is the Aspen City Council Work Session for March 27, 2023. On our agenda this evening, we have an Elected Officials Transportation Committee meeting preparation. Let's see, that meeting is what, next week?
Uh, I think it's-
The sixth, yes. We have a Burlingame Ranch Phase Three update and Phase Three, some affordable housing options for the city of Aspen. And we'll get started right away. I think we're going to go in order, EOTC.
Hello?
Hi.
Linda Dupreez, EOTC Director, and Pete Rice, EOTC staff from the city of Aspen. We're just here to prep you for the meeting happening next Thursday. There we go. It's next Thursday at four o'clock at Pittkin County. Pittkin County is the host and the chair. Go from four to six. We don't have a big agenda, at least not going into it. We are just presenting the decisions reached from October 27th, and then we've got two agenda items. We're going to have a presentation from the consultant Warner Transportation, who did our Snowmass Regional Transit Analysis. That was contracted, we contracted with them last year, 2022. That was part of the Near Term Transit Improvement Program that is in the work plan for this year and last year. And then we're going to have updates on four projects in the work plan. Okay, already said this, the logistics, it's virtual and in-person. The packet went out with the public link, and then you all should have got your unique Zoom link today from Pittkin County. I hope you got that.
If you're going in person, where is the meeting this time?
It's at the Board of Commissioners Meeting Room, just right over there. So first, we'll just do the decisions reached in the work plan. For October 27th meeting, we just, you all approved the work plan and the budget. Then, the presentation by Mark Warner from Warner Transportation, he's going to present his findings. The analysis was really two phases. The first phase was just looking at travel within Snowmass and from up and down valley communities into Snowmass. He looked at sort of four or five different elements of that. One of, one of the items, number three, the third bullet point here, the productivity of direct bus service between Snowmass and Down Valley Communities. Some of that's already been implemented, so he made his recommendations, and then Rafta put that, put that in place pretty quick already for this winter 2022. And then the last phase of it is, Snowmass requested a analysis of adding some service, direct service between Aspen and Snowmass and back. And by direct, we mean the bus would stop at Brush Creek Park and Ride, but you wouldn't have to make a change. And so, he has done that analysis, but is now working on the budgetary and the operational feasibility of that with Rafta, and hopes to present all of those findings next Thursday.
Question, are we going to get cost figures that, what would increase costs to add the extra bus in the summer, or some of the other changes that were discussed in the report?
That is, that is what we're hoping for from Rafta. They're, as you all know, with being short-staffed, the operations department's been pretty overwhelmed this year.
Yeah.
But we are hoping to get that cost, yeah.
Okay, and this study was sponsored by EOTC, or Snowmass, and, and they're only looking at the Snowmass connections. Is there any sort of system-wide look that we've thought about, or for the Upper Valley, Aspen included?
This study was focused on Snowmass. And you all, the work began in 2021. It was put into the Near Term Transit Improvement Program. You all had, I think, five elements that, that were in, you had Tier One and Tier Two projects, and these were all in the Tier One project, and this was one of them. So David Peszek went ahead and contracted with Warner to get that done, and that's what we're going to be looking at.
Okay, and then, do we know how much did this study cost?
The whole thing was fifty, fifty thousand dollars?
Fifty thousand, okay, thank you.
It's not all the way finished yet, but we think it's going to, it's going to come in under budget.
I'm just kind of wondering, is there an anticipation that increased service would come out of EOTC budget, or would come out of the Rafta budget?
We haven't discussed that yet. That will be an item for, for y'all moving forward. Yeah.
Just kind of wondering, what, what we're getting set up for in the meeting coming up? That's all. Kind of want to know if there was an ask afterwards.
It's not an, the budget ask is not happening at this meeting.
Right.
But certainly if, whenever you all want to bring it forward, to, to vote on that, sure.
But, so you're anticipating it's an EOTC cost, not a request of Rafta?
I don't think we know that yet. One question is if Rafta's going to have the capacity.
Sure, I know that's, that underlies everything.
So that is playing into a little bit of that conversation, Rachel, is the capacity to be able to fund an extra bus from Rafta's side, and also staff it. So there's been a lot of back and forth between that item, between Snowmass and Rafta. If we do present it as an EOTC, it would definitely come through the process when we go to the work plan and budget. At this point, we're not recognizing it as an EOTC yet, because it really should be a Rafta or a Snowmass contribution.
Yeah, I, I would think it should be a Rafta contribution, and if, if this board at the future is looking at, should it be an EOTC contribution, then we should be looking at how we can improve the routes to Aspen and in Aspen, and our extended neighborhoods as well.
I think there have been some additional service from the Park and Ride to Snowmass Village, and as I recall, Snowmass Village picked up the cost, so if you could track that down prior to the meeting.
Meeting, that would be good.
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, we'll have Mark Warner here to answer all your questions about the whole study. The next agenda item is, we have four items from the work plan to discuss. The first one was the Transit Signal Bypass of the Buttermilk Intersection. That was grouped with the Buttermilk Bike Pedestrian Feasibility, Crossing Feasibility Study. We contracted with SGM. That's an, that's, that's ongoing, but the first piece of it, which was the Transit Signal Bypass, technical part of that, we, the technical advisory team and the consultants, after several months of work on that, came to the conclusion that it wasn't feasible. SGM is going to be presenting that in June, along with the Buttermilk Crossing cost estimates and all the details with that. We just wanted to let you know that this initial look at it was just, it didn't really make sense. We had, the team had a lot of safety concerns with, it involved sort of channelizing the bus behind a barrier and traffic coming out of Harmony Drive, and how it would join in with the buses coming up valley. And once we just got to look at all the intersection movements, it began to look like it wasn't going to work out. So, it's just an update on that.
Just a comment from my board. When we were looking at this, I can't remember, eighteen months ago, or something like that, or the first iteration was with David before your time here. A big sell on undergrounding and making an underground crossing at Buttermilk was that it was going to allow the buses to speed forward an extra sixty or ninety seconds, or something like that. And it's good knowledge to find out that that's not really a part of it, but I just wanted to put that out there, that that was a real thrust of this, why it could speed the buses, it would speed the BRT, everything like that. And so, I had said I didn't believe it would really matter much to the buses, and that the pedestrian safety made it very important to have going forward. But it really kind of begs the question, then, should it be EOTC money? Again, because it's not mass transit. It's a pedestrian underpass, and it's not going to speed the buses. It's not going to help the mass transit through the intersection any sooner or quicker, or anything like that. And so, I just, I'm not saying it's not a good project, but we've already heard the ski company, who is driving most of the traffic to and from across that intersection, say that they don't want to contribute financially. And so, I think you reach a point where you say, should we continue spending money on this? It's not going to improve the busway. And ski company tends to think that the pedestrians there are all safe enough. So I think that's a discussion point for us to bring up Thursday night. Thank you.
Yeah, we've had this discussion before, for a couple of years, and ski company doesn't think it's warranted. They're not going to contribute. There are a lot of utilities in that area. It's going to be a fourteen million dollar deal, and probably twenty million now. So I'm ready to put a wooden stake in it.
That's all. We'll all be discussing it, but other partners, other funding uses? Other partners under funding uses would make sense, but this is mass transit dollars. Thank you.
And the full, the full report with the signal bypass piece of it, and the Buttermilk Crossing, which will show both an overpass and an underpass scheme with cost estimates, and the result of the public outreach that we, some that we've already done, and some we're continuing this spring, that will all be at the June 29th meeting. Brush Creek Park and Ride Construction Update, we expect to begin construction May 1. Oh, yes. When we came to you in October, we, we told you how the bid came out. We got one bid. They were all really high. There were three pieces of the project, the pavement, just the repaving of the parking lot and lighting, then a bus-only turnaround lane was the second piece, and the third piece were the restrooms. The restrooms came off the project right away. We didn't have near the budget to do that with the bids that came in. And then, the, the turn, the, the bus-only lane entry is also, we might be able to do one part of it, but not the whole thing. So this year is going to be the repavement, the repaving of the whole parking lot, adding 200 spaces, electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and then just a portion of the bus turnaround lane. So that will be beginning in May, and we're going to have temporary parking onsite and overflow parking into the Buttermilk Parking Lot, for all the just regular commuters and visitors and events that happen in the summer.
Yeah, and so, I imagine CDOT will help us with some signage about the changed parking, you know, using those kind of mobile flashing signs or things like, I mean, how-
You're talking VMS. I think the first step right now is the parking department's getting out there and notifying people as we speak, and starting to put down flyers that this is coming, and starting to kind of move people that have been stationed there a little long. And then, yeah, we have the VMS boards that are in place. It's going to be pretty relatively easy to make the switch, but it is a big impact on the commuters.
Well, and there's be summer guests who aren't, aren't familiar with our systems.
And events, events are going to be a big one. And so, we'll have to find the space allocation for them in those two areas, because it is a smaller area.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, we'd be glad to get that rolling. The next item is, we started work on the HOV Lane Enforcement Project, which was going to budget 95K to pay some officers at Pittkin County and both at the state, over time, to try to get some enforcement out there of the existing HOV lane. And in doing the background research for it, a question occurred to us that because it isn't a transit project, that there could be a legal snag with using EOTC money for that. So, we asked for an opinion of the General Counsel at Pittkin County, John Ely, and his initial opinion of that was that it was not eligible for EOTC funds. So, we all get to discuss what to do with that going forward, but it is looking to him like this particular part of the HOV Lane project is something that the EOTC can't spend the transit tax money on.
Yeah, I saw that in the packet, and thank you for breaking the bad news to us. We shouldn't shoot aim messengers here. I think that this is an incredibly important thing to go forward with. As others have said, it's called for in the Record of Decision. It's our Transportation Demand Management Program that goes along with the parking rates in town, which are pretty substantial for people during the middle of the day. I would suggest that we look at how the county allocates sales tax, when they redistribute the two cent sales tax they collect. And all of us, Snowmass, Aspen, and Pittkin County, contribute from our general funds to make the HOV enforcement happen, and just use the ratio that the, the county already uses every year for divvying out sales tax. I think it's like forty-eight percent Aspen, some percent Snowmass, some percent county. I just can't really recall. But, you know, if we're going to make BRT work, if we make the existing highway and entrance work, which we will be living with for many years to come, we need to enforce HOV rules, and we need to start doing it. I mean, obviously, the state should step up. It's their highway. But I think this was kind of an experiment to, to see how effective it was, to see if we get better compliance. It wasn't ongoing in fifteen years worth of funding or anything. And I just think we should all think very seriously about making that request at the EOTC meeting, that this project, this part goes forward somehow. Thank you.
Okay, so, the Dynamic Road Pricing Project, you all approved that in the work plan on October 27th, and then I believe it was mid, late November, Aspen decided to pursue your Newcastle Creek Bridge Project entrance to Aspen design outreach and study. Everything that we understand about dynamic road pricing and cordon pricing and congestion pricing is that a study of that without knowing what our infrastructure is going to look like would have to be redone after we do determine that. The two most obvious things to us, our staff, is not knowing if we're going to have a dedicated bus lane all the way into town, or if the cemetery lane connection would be, you know, not happen right there, and you would have your open space in front of that. We just feel that the technical piece and the human piece of this would, we couldn't really figure all of that out until we know about the infrastructure. So we are recommending that we delay this project until we have a better idea of what that's going to look like. We also believe we would really have to be able to look at beefing up transit operations, or adding different types of service between Aspen and the Brush Creek Park and Ride, for example, so that we could, in the extension, extensive public outreach, in doing something bold and innovative, and also drastic, if you will, like tolling or cordon pricing, we would also need to know that we could provide a lot of alternatives for folks that would be shifting out of those car trips. So- So, and then I would love for Pete to elaborate on this.
I think we're just looking at this as a delay until we have more pieces. And also, we really need to have a comprehensive look of where the community is at with something like this. This is a very bold strategy. It would reduce vehicles. But some of the questions like why? Our vehicle counts are at the lowest historically since nineteen ninety-four. Are we trying to reduce that number at this point? I also think that this would be, start to hit the equity question very hard, that we're not prepared to answer that why question yet. And we also don't know the impact on workforce implications of doing something like this for Aspen. And I, we're fully aware of the study and why they chose this as a high piece because it would absolutely reduce the vehicle counts. I think our staff is, EOTC staff is pretty aggressive in our work plan right now. And we just, this is a pretty bold project that we'd have to jump on. And we think that there's other pieces that we can focus on with the transit to improve that piece right now during the peak periods.
Where is dynamic road pricing working in the United States? I know that there are some bypasses on I-70 coming into, through Georgetown, but I want to know where we could compare this to in the United States.
There's a lot of places that are doing, that are already doing tolling, both with high occupant vehicle tolling and, and high occupancy toll lanes and also just congestion pricing, which is where there's a lane and cars that choose to drive in that get charged, whether they're high occupancy or not. And then as the congestion mounts in a two to three hour period, the price goes up, goes up, goes up. So there's places all over the country that are doing that already. Certainly we have, Colorado has HOV lanes in other places.
US 36 in Boulder.
Right. But those, as the initial research I started working on before we, before the entrance to Aspen project maybe changed what our infrastructure would be like, was that now in the rest of Colorado, HRV lanes are three, three or more people, not two. We would also have to, but we, we knew this going into it, look at state law change in order to toll a general purpose lane. We'd have to get a state law change, which is not impossible. But the places where, where the cordon pricing is being developed in New York City right now, they're working on that right now and they are going to go forward with it. The cordon is when you just draw a zone around a central business district or, or a zone and everybody who drives in that gets charged, whether they're a commuter or not. They come into the zone, they get charged. They're looking at that for New York City. They've also just formed a commission to look at it for Boston.
I think London has had that for quite a while.
London, Singapore, Stockholm. It works really well for reducing car tr, car trips. I think London's numbers are what, thirty percent reduction? It works really well. It's bold and it's effective. There are a lot of questions about our particular context here that are quite different from the real successful European models that, that a study would look at. And that's why we would do the study and we allotted, you all allotted a hundred thousand dollars to do that. But the fact that our infrastructure is not certain what that's going to be like, I think is just the first big hurdle there. We would have to redo the study basically after we had determined that.
Yeah, I'd like you to hook up with Boston and New York City to see where they are on it and.
Hopefully whatever consultants were out there that wanted to work on this would, would have seen how all of that works. There's actually a couple of smaller cities in the UK that are more along the lines of what our context would be, that there's one city called Durham, who, it's a city of fifty thousand people, but they have a corridor that's got pieces on it that's a thousand years old. So they have just cordoned that corridor and they charge people just to drive on that old street. That sort of is.
Romans made pretty good roads.
Yeah. That's exactly what it is. So, you know, we're, everybody in our field and transportation nerds love this stuff. We're all really waiting to see what happens in New York and then in Boston as it develops.
Yeah, I actually think, Pete, you just gave a really good case for why we need to move forward with this. And maybe not the whole pie, right? Because I think there's clearly some unknowable questions that will influence things. Like you said, whether we have the direct bus lane in will affect how many cars we need to limit because on the plus side, we've taken them off the road. And so that can address the pricing. You know, different areas for lots, whether it's the Brush Creek Park and Ride or whether it's something further in, might address sort of the tolling point. So I get that and I understand why we wouldn't want to do that. But it seems to me that unless we think there's a future where this isn't coming, and I don't see that future, then there are some key threshold questions we can begin to study, right? I mean, the equity piece is a great one. No matter where that toll is or what it is, we're going to figure out how as a community we want to solve that. The legality of this is another one. It's a state highway. We've had the conversations of, can we even do this? You know? I, I think that there are some initial steps that we should be looking at that will apply to any placement or circumstance because by their nature, they're not easy answers and they're going to take some time. So I think if we can, you know, kind of knock off those initial dominos, knowing that where they spread may vary, but that it'll apply in all cases, we would set ourselves up for success chronologically in a way that's beneficial. Because even though our car numbers are low, the traffic experience isn't that, right? And I don't, I don't see that frustration going down anytime soon.
Yeah, Rachel.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of things. I agree with your assessment overall. We were unable to get a traffic counter installed on the.
Power plant.
Power plant road.
We're working on it. It's closer.
I know, I know. But when we say car counts are down, I think that until we can include power plant road, we don't really know that. And, and, you know, when they were counting two, three thousand cars a day in one direction, that, that's significant. And so we need to know that happens. The other thing I just, you know, would observe that, you know, reality sets in, you know, you can only do so much with what we have for current infrastructure. And until the community makes its choice about the entrance, we're not going to be able to implement all the measures of the Aspen Institute Mobility Study and the things that may better control traffic growth in our future. So that's just frustrating because that is a full program, a set of potential opportunities to manage traffic growth. And I would say that the last time this board talked about the entrance and next steps, one of those things that came from the table for me and I think with agreement was how does the Aspen Institute Mobility Plan, how can it be merged with the entrance goals and dynamics? And I am not quite curious, but I, I think that the memo that we all just recently got regarding the entrance, regarding the CDOT questions that they have answered for us should be attached to the EOTC packet so that others can take a look at that. You know, it's, it's, it's nobody's fault in this room or at this table, but we've been dancing around the, the real elephant in the room for a long time and that is simply the entrance. You know, you can only manage traffic so much with what we have now. And that's either going to be a, a solution that supports more mass transit or it's going to be a solution that's designed for quicker access for single occupant vehicles. I mean, that's, that's, that's where it's kind of going. And, you know, my brother was out here to ski for two weeks and he does that every year, has for forty years now. And he made a comment, it's always nice to see it from someone else's eyes, and he said, can you imagine how special your guests would feel if their bus had its own lane into town and you weren't stuck behind a belching dump truck when you're hot and tired and sweaty after skiing all day? And it's kind of funny because we always think about it as traffic and congestion and how often do we talk about the guest experience? Not very often. And I, I certainly hope that whatever entrance solution is chosen does have a dedicated bus lane into town. And if not, I think it would really violate all the original principles that we had put in place for wanting what the entrance should solve for. So anyhow, I just, I, I think it, we need to say it pretty clearly that until Aspen picks where its infrastructure is going to go, we can't implement, you know, regardless of whether we want to or not. So that's a, it's kind of a yucky bottom line, but it doesn't have to wait until the entrance is built, I don't think, just that the alignment is chosen and the, the different engineering, greater detail work is done on it certainly. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Do you mind just giving us a little bit more detail? You just said that the nineteen ninety-three traffic levels were, we are below those markedly or something. Can you just refresh us?
I'll write you an info memo that contains all the latest travel data so that you can all have that for the, before the meeting next week so you can look at that.
Great, thanks.
Just to say, just to context that, to Rachel's point, if there are known omission or exclusion zones, you know, things like not measuring the other exit, it'd be great to just note that somewhere on there so we're reading it in context.
And then you mentioned the, the power plant, traffic counter was mentioned and you said you're getting closer. What do you think?
So that's part of an EOTC project that the city has added on to. And we put that out to bid last year to get counters in multiple locations throughout the roadway. And the city's contribution was going to be power plant road and then possibly the entry again, so that they're all on the same system. And it's being designed by the county right now. And they're kind of coming into a place where they can bid it out again. So essentially, we first asked for somebody to design and bid it. We couldn't get people to do it, which is interesting. And then, so we had to go and design it and we think that there's going to be somebody bid this year.
You say design it. I mean, I was just assuming that a traffic counter is the kind of thing that a car drives over and a, and a box counts a number.
These are permanent ones.
Yeah, these are permanent. So there is a design. You're the one running that. Do you want to?
By design, we mean we're looking at different technologies. The, just the counters in the ground, they count cars, but there's some pretty fantastic technology out there where we can also not just count the cars, but we can know what kind of vehicle it is. If it's a passenger car, if it's a pickup truck, if it's a hotel sprinter van, or if it's a bus, or if it's a big work truck. So right now, Picken County Telecommunications is running the project, but we're right now talking to vendors for the technology piece. And we have a new person on our team, Andrew Knapp, who's the new Picken County engineer that we stole away from CDOT. Brilliant guy who is leading the county's part of that. So we are planning to have that implemented by the end of the year.
Is it doing that by weight, dimensions or visual? I asked to know if we would also know how many people are in the vehicles?
I'm not sure about that. There's some.
I'm not asking for an actual level of complexity, but like depending on what methodology it's using, if that was available, it would be quite interesting.
Some of the technologies have come up against privacy laws in some states. So, but some of them that we've been talking to, you can do pretty much whatever you want.
Yeah, I would think.
And some of them are quite impressive. We just talked to a company last week that's put a lot of these in very cold places, Toronto and Montreal. And we're going to continue to talk to more vendors till we get the one that we want. And we, I think we're going to maybe have a report on that in August. But we've got the, initially they had, we had the five locations and one was power plant. We're adding also Maroon Creek Road to that. We've been talking with Skeeco about all the congestion that comes out of Highlands and the high school all at the same time. So we decided to add that location to it.
Cool. Great.
So I, I, I'm all for it. Sounds like it's part of a larger project. I don't think that we probably need that level of detail on the power plant road one. My, my desire, my singular desire here would be to get our power plant road counter up before this summer, to hear that we're going to go through a process that involves the county, five other locations, et cetera, et cetera. It just sounds like it's just a little bit, the scope has just grown. We're trying to make decisions for our community based on some of this information that would be so helpful. So, you know, I know this isn't the, the meeting that we were going to discuss this, but I would look at Sarah and say, Sarah, if there was the ability to put up one of the temporary ones that does roll over it and count the cars, it'd be great to get that going before the end of the year.
We're happy to start it. The reality is for the permanent counter, trying to bid it alone, we're not, it's not a sexy bid for one. And no one wants to bid on it when it's by itself. It takes the other four to get a contractor to come to the Upper Valley to do it.
But if it, it's one of the temporary, just.
Right. I said, we can, we can look indefinitely to the temporary, but your permanent one, we failed to get a bid on the permanent counter last year. So we'll, we'll look at what our options are for a temporary counter if a, the permanent solution can't be in before food in line.
Thank you. Very good.
Any other questions here, EOTC items coming up? Keep in mind, this is not actually our EOTC meeting.
Yeah. I forget that sometimes because it's always the same meeting.
But it's important for our board to be on the same page, the same way other boards are all on the same page.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So if there's any more requests for information or any prep that anybody, okay, all right.
I would just comment on power plant road kiss.
Yeah.
Just give us numbers.
Keep it simple.
I guess my last comment would be, you know, you said a couple of things about the construction that's going to go on at Brush Creek. And so I, at the meeting on Thursday, I'm, I'm going to be interested in a little bit more of the, the alternative parking plan that you, that you just talked about. You said something about Buttermilk and you said something about utilizing some. So more details when we get to the next Thursday and stuff, because I'll be interested in how that's going to shake out. It might give us, it's one of those things, it's a challenge that turns into an opportunity where we can learn a little bit more about this. We've had conversations about the Buttermilk parking lot and maybe some potential there, et cetera. So this might be actually one of those kind of, hey, look what we learned by accident.
We can do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Our next item up is the Burlingame Ranch Phase Three update. This involves sales, lotteries and rightsizing proposal.
My name is Chris Everson, Affordable Housing Project Manager with the Capital Asset Department. I am joined by Cindy Christensen with APCHA, Rob Schuber, Capital Asset Director, and Perry Klipses, who is a project manager with the Capital Asset Department. Does that work? So today, we're first going to start with a construction update on Burlingame Ranch Phase Three Affordable Housing Project. That's seventy-nine for sale condominiums. Perry's going to do that update. Then myself and Cindy will talk about the lottery and sales process for the units. We've inserted a slide to your presentation for council discussion on buyer qualifications. And after that, I'll talk about the income distribution for the project and then Cindy can talk about the rightsizing pilot. Perry?
Thanks, Chris. Evening.
Thanks, Chris. Evening. So back in July 2022, it was announced that sales units would be postponed due to quality assurance steps that the city was taking. After the project team discovered performance issues with the windows, we began extensive investigative work to understand the magnitude of the problem. Once we extended the problem was known, the city began lengthy negotiations with the original suppliers and installers. After the negotiations, it took many months for the windows to be manufactured and delivered. But I can happily say that the replacements have commenced, so work is in progress. As part of the quality assurance efforts, window back rod and ceiling is also being verified for the balance of the windows not being replaced. Per the memo, staff has requested additional funds to assist with the quality control efforts and subsequent schedule impacts. These funds will be used only as needed to maintain momentum and make the necessary repairs as expeditiously as possible. The city will be seeking fair reimbursement for applicable suppliers and installers due to these impacts.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions?
Yep, only one, a comment before you change this slide. I love that rendering. Aspen Colorado, not only a jogger, but she's running stairs. So appropriate.
That's how we do it.
Right?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The image is cropped. There's a guy at the top of the stairs with a bike.
About to drop in.
People who produce the rendering, I was like, did he, did he push the bike up the stairs or is he going to?
Ride it down.
Wasn't sure which.
He rode up and a bunny hop turned around.
Right. Yeah.
When you bunny hop the turnaround.
Questions, comments, before we move on to sales and lotteries? In the memo, there was additional information about when we hope to be able to complete the remediation work that Perry talked about. Clear enough from the memo?
I'm going to jump in real quick. What I'd suggest council members is that we find some time after, right after mud season to get you out to the site. So you have an opportunity to go around the site with staff as soon as it's, it's safe and dry enough.
I mean, we had a tour, I think it was September of 22. And the units were, some of the units were there at the time. They were in better condition at the time in their, in terms of their appearance than they are now. We now know that they needed this extra work at that time, so.
Has the work commenced on the window replacements?
Yeah.
If you go to the site, you can see. On the outside of the building, a lot of the trim has been removed around the windows to get ready for new windows. Inside the units, there's, well, and there are some windows already replaced. And you can see drywall on the inside had to be removed and replaced. As Chris says, they, the units looked better six months ago than they do now. But, but to me, what looks good is progress.
I recounted the windows on the project just the other day, 495 windows, so this is more than half of the windows on the job. We did work with the folks in the housing office, including Cindy and Matthew and Bethany. And we talked about numerous different ways to approach the lotteries for the project. If we tried to lottery off all 79 units at one time, it would only take 12 lotteries. And it would also be impossible for us to do that many at one time. We looked at going building by building, but then there would be way too many lotteries to manage. We, we, we looked at splitting the project in half. We settled on this proposal, which is doing two buildings at a time. Buildings eight and nine, which is 24 units in 10 lotteries, followed by buildings 10 and 11, 12 and 13, 14 and 15. So the map shown in the slide is, is a cropped version of a larger map. There was a link to the full map in your memo. On that map, this would flow from north to south, which on that picture was right to left. It just so happens that the window remediation is occurring along that same methodology. So we can actually try to be ready to have lotteries in buildings eight and nine as soon as we're able to get those buildings complete and ready for turnover. So this process for lotteries attempts to balance the quantity of lotteries and the quantity of sales contracts as best we can manage with the resources that we have, and also to time it so that we can be as ready as possible when the remediation moves along.
Chris, can you just take one second and explain to people why 24 units takes 10 lotteries in that relationship?
Sure. It's a combination of each income level and unit bedroom count, right? So.
Do you want me to explain it?
So if there were, so if there were two, if there were two or more units that had the same bedroom count and category, people are.
Three, three bedroom units, we hold one lottery. And then the first, the number one person gets to pick the three units. The second person gets the two, and then the last one gets what's left over. So we have to do less lotteries that way.
So we counted up each of those occurrences and tried to figure out what we can best manage. At the time, each unit, the information, the details about each unit will be available to those bidders. So they'll know exactly what unit, what it looks like, you know, so that they know exactly what they're, they're bidding on. And so, you know, we think the process will take some three to five months. When we did a different sales process for Burlingame Two, there were 82 units. Process still took three to five months. We were selling units from about February through June of that year. So we'll be able to do this as efficiently as possible. Any questions here?
Ward, Rachel? On a timeline, are these lotteries being run as they're completed? Is that the idea?
Yeah, we, we, we plan to try to have the lotteries that can occur simultaneously to occur simultaneously. And then ones that can't will occur in, in series.
But the, the buildings eight and nine are going to be done all at once?
Yeah, yeah, that's 24 units.
And those are the first ones that you anticipate the window replacement to be complete on?
Yes.
And then 10 and 11 will be next in line with, so these coincide with completion dates?
They do.
Yeah, I'm supportive of this approach. I can tell you've put a lot of time and thought into how it should go. The thing that strikes me though is that we should try to lay it out for the public in its totality. So that if someone's thinking, well, I'm going to enter the first lottery, or I'm going to hold off to the third lottery because that's the unit size I want and that's my categories, things like that. Just so people know which, which ones they want to get involved in and, and get prepared for that, you know, so that it's not just a surprise to them, oh no, now there's another lottery two weeks from now. And I should have waited and put my name in that one, not this one, you know, things like that.
One of the difficulties that we have, and we for sure want to give everyone as much notice as possible, with the remediation work and the, you know, labor challenges that we have, we want to give everyone as much notice as we possibly can, when we can.
I'm saying even if we say upcoming lotteries will include, without a date. It doesn't have to, it just has to say what types of units are still coming up in lotteries.
We could surely do that.
Yeah, something along those lines.
I think we have a complete, Chris already has a complete list of what's in every unit, every building anyway. So we can just make sure that people see that. And just because somebody's in eight and nine doesn't mean that they can't go through every single one. Even if somebody wins an eight and nine, if they, they can still do others. They might lose their earnest money, but they could still.
Bid again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good APCHA newsletter item for like the quarterly or whatever, just like click for the guide and you can.
Yeah, okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of this council discussion on, you know, buyer qualifications, we did make note here that Tonnison Mass Village has some different qualifications requirements with rentals as well as with sales. And so I noticed that it was in their sales lottery priority, this particular item. And we wanted to leave time here for council to discuss this as needed. I, I could add that right now, we're planning on using the, the standard APCHA requirements for Burlingame Three.
Right. I was wondering, when I was looking at this in the memo, I'm trying to think. Somebody's qualifications for APCHA wouldn't come into play in the first priority. It's, it's Snowmass Village and, and their qualifications.
Yeah, this is separate from the rightsizing discussion that was in your memo. And this wasn't addressed in your memo.
And I guess I saw one, I guess I was wondering what the difference between, besides being a resident of Snowmass Village perhaps, versus the APCHA guidelines, where the differences was. The one that I saw was the hour qualifications was one thing and stuff like that.
That's a little different. Plus, we don't oversee Snowmass Village at all. So they're totally separate.
Yeah.
And they're, they're, they took some of their criteria from us, but they do have a priority for people who actually work up in Snowmass Village.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. You know, I had requested, we discussed this repeatedly over the past year. And I want to be clear, we don't have to adopt what Snowmass Village has said, or how they write it out, or anything like that. The real question starts to be, should we prioritize the Burlingame sales units for people who work within the city of Aspen? Or, and I'd be open to supporting within the urban growth boundary. There's a lot of reasons for that, but that's what this is talking about. And that you would obviously still need to have your maximum occupancy. This isn't about saying, well, you work in Aspen, so a single person could buy a three bedroom or something like that. You still would have to have your occupancy. But it'd be a matter of taking care of people who work within the city and/or, as I said, the urban growth boundary, I'd be happy to support that as well. But I, I, I just can't see the type of money we're going to have invested in this project. After the sales, we'll get a little money back, but I, I don't know, we have 20 million in it, something like that, that, that's sunk money. And there's no Snowmass Village contribution, there's no Picken County contribution. It's all coming from Aspen taxpayers. The short-term rental taxes were passed to create housing for the workforce of Aspen. We're taxing our residents. Snowmass Village isn't taxing their STRs and the county's not taxing their XDRs for housing or any other purpose. We all were just at the Regional Housing Symposium. I think it was a great effort. It brings forth a lot of good ideas. And I think there's a lot of ways to contribute and support regional efforts. But I don't think that we should be building housing for businesses on the Picken County side of Basalt. Or we should be building housing for Snowmass Village, for that matter. We have tremendous job shortages here. And you have to realize that the county budget and school district budgets and others are also very much based on having a successful Aspen economy that our property values hold and that our sales tax produces sales tax that we give to the school district. That regional housing symposium was great because so many times, the expression of live near where you work was raised. This is about transportation. This is about whether we have people commuting in the opposite direction from Aspen after we've built this housing. And I, again, I do think we should and can support regional housing efforts as they come together. But I, I don't know that we're going to be spending massive amounts of Aspen money to build housing for the town of Basalt or Carbondale or Glenwood Springs. There's still going to be at some level for Aspen workforce. When we, you know, I was thinking about the best model is really what the county was able to do with the school district, for the Roaring Fork School District, where the school district had land and the county put in some money and other partners and Habitat for Humanity and a lot of volunteer hours and created a housing project. But the county got a few units from that for their own purposes or for Picken County level employees. Not, not just to throw it open to anyone who needed housing. And so I'm hopeful that we will see others begin to contribute more generously to a housing program in the future. You know, but I, I just simply can't, in all good faith, turn back to my residents and the people who I asked to vote to tax themselves and to tax this community with STR taxes or pay the taxes every time you buy and sell a house. And that we're trying to build housing for every job throughout Picken County as a whole. And, and that's what not prioritizing this means. And the last thing I'll say is that these are our neighbors. They're right down the street. They've been prioritizing their housing for people who work in Snowmass Village for a very, very long time. And I think that it's time that Aspen starts to do the same. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just as a factual point to add as well, Basalt requires individuals living in their D restricted units be employed within the city of, the town of Basalt.
Ward? Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with Rachel. I mean, we're, we're supplying all the funds to do the developments. Our neighbors are limiting who can occupy what the priorities are. I think Snowmass Village does, somebody has, they have their unit. They can change jobs and not lose their unit, I think is the way it's structured. In Scottson, it's a memo, a number, I think number four on it, kind of, if, if I'm reading this correctly, is that that kind of plays into focus in on the 505 type of funding or housing that we have. Where if you're an employee at Tonnison Mass Village, a Snowmass Wildcat Fire District, Snowmass Water and Sanitation, you have your head on the waiting list. So there, that I think kind of focuses in on what our 505 fund does and what we're going to be asked next on this work session. But the, in, at the housing summit, the, the four of us were at.
Yeah.
The, Matthew Gillan was one of the panelists and he said, I, you know, I'm, my focus on Picken County because they're the ones that hire me and they're the ones that do the, the funding for the units. So for, it's all tristic for us to say, everybody welcome. But I think, I think it's fair and just and equitable that if we put the funds in to develop a project, that people that are employed in Aspen have a higher priority to get housing in those units.
Yeah, I would support moving forward with the existing rules, with the exception of the downsizing. I appreciate both of your perspective and I just, I just totally disagree. I'm happy to expound on that more if you want to know. I mean, look, we've been leading in the housing game for decades. And I understand that Snowmass does it the way they do, Basalt does it the way they do. I appreciate that. I totally agree with the goal of work where you live. And I think that that really is the goal. But I just feel like we're at a moment where for the first time, and you know, my history is a bit off, I apologize to anybody, but like, as far as I can tell, for the first time, all parties are showing up for housing. Other communities, private businesses, nonprofits, you know, and they're just showing up, right? It's probably a long time before now and more. And I just feel that although it may cost us a little bit of money in the interim, although it might feel like we're carrying the bigger burden, I think we have the luxury and responsibility to act as we want to see this work. And I think as soon as we pull back and say, we're just going to focus on ours, the message we're sending to everybody else intentionally or otherwise is just focus on yours. And, you know, that may work to get Basalt and Basalt and Aspen and Aspen. But I think when we're all working together, what we can create is greater than the sum of its parts, not just the additive nature of the sum of its parts. And I'm not saying that we have to do this forever, but I think in this bridge moment where, you know, we can make some choices and demonstrate that we are playing the game for the entire region and invite everyone to the table. And then maybe that leads to the discussion where, hey, we do need to like focus on our area. and invite everyone to the table, and then maybe that leads to the discussion where, hey, we do need to like focus on our areas. But I just think, at this critical moment, when people are showing up, you know, I just don't want to take an action that causes everyone to go back into their shell. I think it's going to be bad for all of us.
I understand where you're coming from, Skippy, and we've all discussed this a few times before. But, you know, when you say "act as we want to see what works," that's what I'm doing. I think that we keep talking about living closer to where you work. People would be bicycle distance into Aspen from Burlingame. That's what I want to see work. In terms of acting together, I would be more than happy, and this board will have to consider it after my passing here, but to allocate $2 million to put towards regional housing efforts, and help put out some seed money with no expectation, or no "where are they going to work," or anything like that. Just say, "Yeah, we're in, we're in too." But we're not, I can't see, I mean, to go where you're going with it right now would be to say, "Well, let's open up the APCHA housing for anyone who works anywhere in the Roaring Fork Valley." Why not? Why not lead the way and say, "You can live up here and work there." This is going to be the most affordable housing that's going to come online in this valley, probably for the next decade or more. There will be people bidding who do live and work, or would work in Redstone, or would work in Basalt, or would work in Snowmass Village. And I can't turn back to this business community in Aspen and tell them, "Sorry, we had to leave the way, and over half of the units are no longer going to people who work in Aspen. But please pay your sales tax for more housing, collect it from your guests." You know, I just can't go there. And, you know, what I have said is I'd like to see this extended to the urban growth boundary. And what has really struck me very strongly was when we were in the APCHA board meeting, and the fellow came in who had bought the old Pitco Off-Road, and he said, "I can't bring in a new mechanic. They won't have four years to get into your lottery. I can't do anything. How can I house my workers here? How can we run an automobile shop?" You know, "We only have one gas station left in town, and we have one at the Airport Business Center." So I'm more than happy to include that as adjunct to our business. You know, I think we all were looking through the transportation memo with little different eyes, but they did include a report about job generation, and how many jobs were in Aspen, how many jobs were in Snowmass, how many jobs were in other places. And they credited Aspen with well over 9,000 jobs. We need more units, and we need units that deliver services for our guests, and that keep our businesses running. And, you know, again, if everybody else was wide open, it might be a different story. But it's not been fair for a long time, when new units come online for sale. And if there's not enough Aspen takers in the first lotteries, or whatever.
I don't think that's going to be the issue.
Then they'll go forward, but, you know. So again, I understand where you're coming from, Skippy, but I have to get down to practicality. I need people living close to town, and I fully support developing a priority system for this, for our for-sale units.
Yeah, Skippy, in respect, I was elected by the people in Aspen, the voters in Aspen. And I feel my responsibility is to the Aspen community. And I think the tax funds that generate the funds to build these units are come from the Aspen community. And I think that my responsibility is to serve Aspen, and not to see our taxpayer dollars go to support Willets, or some, or Basalt, or Snowmass Village. So I feel pretty strongly that if you work in the city of Aspen, you should get a higher priority for access. And I understand we disagree, but we do disagree. And I'm curious how the mayor feels about this.
Me too.
Can I just add one more thing, and I'm not trying to convince either of you, nor do I expect to. And I appreciate that, I mean, I think it's a fair, logical, direct equation. I think a couple things. One, to kind of create the straw man of the change being where we've been is unfair. I mean, we've been in this spot with this priority forever. So the significant change is to restrict it internally. So I think we need to recognize that's what the change would be. And then, look, if you want to house enough employees here to make Aspen, just as it is, without any job growth function, I think we have to recognize that the existing system we have in place to do that won't solve it. Like, even with the STR tax, the revenues aren't there, the land isn't there, the appetite for development isn't there. And so, you know, to just say, "We're going to go that way and continue to go that way," but narrow the scope, to me, is to sort of accept defeat on the goal. And I think we've got to keep the aperture wide enough to bring in partners, whatever that looks like, or we're not going to succeed. You know, that housing summit, you know, when you talk about all those different potential partners, and who knows what they will or won't bring, the math equations look better and better, further and further down valley. The opportunities are less complex further and further down valley. So, you know, I hope I'm wrong on this, but I would suggest that just looking here now is, in the long run, going to look short-sighted. And we will look back wishing we had kept the opportunities more open, because what we chose to narrow to didn't get the job done. And, you know, again, I don't need to argue or whatever.
Yeah, and time will tell.
Totally.
For so many reasons. But I sat through the summit as well, and I didn't hear any speaker talk about how they really want to house Aspen's affordable housing shortage. That they wanted all of our employees moving into Carbondale, or moving into Basalt, and they were going to support that commuter society. They were all talking about jobs for their employees near their towns. That was what I heard loud and clear, when you hear the people from Parachute talking about their shortages, or the Basalt Chamber, their businesses can't expand because they can't get enough employees, because they don't have enough housing. They weren't talking about "how do we help Aspen house its workforce." They were talking about "how do we house our workforce in our town, in Carbondale, in Glenwood, in these towns." Not the other way around. And I don't want to continue to promote the commuter culture that says, "You should live here, but work 30 miles away." And that's going in a different way. There's been a lot of changes in housing policy over the years. And you go back far enough, and it wasn't that far, the Housing Office itself used to be the development entity. It used to have development planners and everything like that, and that was a change to bring it into the city of Aspen. And one of the real drivers at that time was because Aspen was the only one putting money into really developing housing. And that's continued to be the case, that change, that split happened. And it didn't get any reaction from anybody else, saying, "Oh, I guess we should start putting in more, we should start doing more." It didn't. And now we're where we are. And I would like to see a lot of these units go to people who've been on the list forever, trying to stay in the town.
Hey, look, I'm one of them, I mean, I get it.
Yeah, I know. Okay, well, very good. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I get you.
Yeah, Chris?
Just one more piece of information before you jump in. You mentioned $20 million subsidy, this project closer to $40 million subsidy. There's a question here about how you go about this and what it means if you were to do this. If you were to do this in a permanent deed restriction, where it affects the initial sales, and it affects all future resales, that would probably need to be a customized deed restriction that's attached to the units. We've discussed that there are some unknowns about what that means for how they're managed in the future, and the role of APCHA in that, because it's not a standard APCHA deed restriction. But separate from that, there's some conversation about, and again, we would need to get back to you on this. But there's some conversation about developers of affordable housing sometimes have a say in the initial rent up or sales. And so if you did this only for the initial sales, there could be some different conditions, potentially. And again, we would have to get more information, rather than doing it in perpetuity. So just wanted to point out that there are some potentially possibilities that we could find out more information about for you.
In short, you have flexibility, you are the developer, right? You just let us know how you want to administer your new product for its sales, and we will figure out the system to do that. Thank you.
So my comments would be, number one, what is the funding resource for the town of Snowmass Village, or the town of Basalt in their housing programs?
I am not really sure.
Snowmass Village has a real estate transfer tax. They did a reallocation of it to, actually, I think they've done it twice now, twice now, to help support their program. Basalt, I believe, has been general funded dollars. I don't recall them having a dedicated tax, but while we were sitting here, I can look.
No problem, that's close enough.
And some are mitigation units.
Right, all three municipalities have mitigation requirements, which could be a fee in lieu.
Then, has this item been discussed at APCHA Board?
I think there's been a brief conversation, and I'd say, in general, people were concerned about drawing up the wagons around city limits. They thought a little more about the Airport Business Center being included as adjunct to Aspen. I don't know that it really went much further than that. But they would say, "Hey, we manage them, you build them." You know, it's not...
I guess what I would say is, you know, this is an item that I would love to have some input on, from boards like APCHA, maybe CCLC, maybe NextGen, just for these other boards that we have, and, you know, what their thoughts are on this. That would be interesting for me. As of currently, and I really, you know, I think Skippy brings up great discussion points. Rachel, you've been talking about this for a while, and I've been really agreeing with the approach. I think that it does solve more of the problems that we look to have solutions to through that system. I also wonder if, you know, Rachel referred to the commuter communities that we have going on right now. I'm not sure that we, you know, are doing that much of a favor to some of the other communities if we were to, say, take that worker from, that works in Basalt, move them up here. I don't know that we're not creating more impacts for them, that we're trying to avoid, and that we're trying to solve in our own area. So, right now, I am supportive of what's been suggested here, and that is that we move to a UGB priority. I like Chris's last input that was saying that that can be done just on initial offering or continual. And I do want more information on that, I would like to have more information. But right now, I am leaning towards supporting that UGB priority. I think it really attacks some of the issues that we're trying to find solution to. So that's where I am right now. I would ask for just a little bit more information about it going forward. And I guess, whether we have the opportunity for actual input from some other boards or not, I think that I would probably be more equipped now to go out and seek some of that input myself. So Rachel, and then Ward.
Yeah, you know, I can understand that, Tori, and I think there's time before it all has to get settled. Not too much time, but some time. I think we should also maybe ask more business community than directly, what about the Aspen Restaurant Association, the Aspen Chamber of Commerce, you know, the Aspen Lodging Association, as much as our boards. You know, I think that's a little more real feedback. Then, the other thing is on deed restrictions and deeds. I believe the city, in the past, as a sponsor of the housing unit, the city or the county would have an interest in that deed restriction. And the deed restrictions on resale do get changed to be updated to current APCHA guidelines. And when we first began discussing this quite a while ago, I had said, "Hey, you know, if the county passes a big tax, and they start really supporting housing growth, and, you know, others do as well, when those deed restrictions come in, we can change them." You know, so it can go for perpetuity, but again, we always change them on resale as it is, through APCHA, and it could be changed to be wide open again on resale if the climate is different. I mean, that's what I think that, you know, so I don't see that as much of an issue of having to work that out now, because it can change with time and circumstances as we, as resales happen, and as the deed restrictions change now.
Ward? Yeah, my thoughts are to start off in perpetuity, and as Rachel just said that, and Jim has reminded us a number of times, whatever we decide, a future council can change. So we're not casting something in stone. So if we start off in perpetuity, and we find that there's a need to change it, we, our future council can change it.
As they come up for sale.
Yes.
That's that one.
So just to recap, it sounds like we should do some additional work to bring back for work session closer to sales time. Might take us that long, about 90 days or so, about a few options about how you could administer that priority, and how that has worked in some of our other neighboring communities. Is there anything else you're looking for? I mean, I heard that request from one of you. I guess I do need you, Ward, to weigh in here, too.
Well, the APCHA requirements are on rentals, so every two years you have to requalify, you have to work in Picken County. So we could do the same type of thing here, but these are sale units that we're talking about.
Right, as a sale unit, you have to, though, still have a compliance requirement.
Right.
And so that certainly would continue to happen. You know, with these being sales units, you are talking definitely about the first sale, and we can go from there. I think one of the things that I heard is that there may be an interest in additional input from other sources. And that's something I need clarity on if we should be doing here in the next 90 days. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know what the scope of that looks like, how to kind of get some feedback there. Maybe just putting this out and asking for comments on our city web communications or something, I don't know. I mean, I just would like to know. You know, this is going to be discussed in the public, and I would just, you know, I guess my request would be that we have some sort of input opportunity, so that we can hear what our community thinks about this.
I would just say, I mean, I obviously won't be here, but I would want both you guys and the new members who are going to be catching up very rapidly to have as much robust information as they can. And I think that information would help with catch-up.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and the only thing I really think is that it has to be framed a little bit. You know, there can be pros and cons, you know, of why the city is considering this. But when you look at how many units we got, $40 million over 70 units. That's a lot per unit, to say, "Should this go wide open, whoever has the longest history in town, or wins the lottery, or should they be prioritized for City of Aspen?" And no units will be vacant, you know, if all the Aspen people have bid themselves out, and, you know, we'll find out.
We don't have to worry about selling the units.
Yeah, no, we don't.
I think that this is a work session, a decision isn't made here, it will come back to a future council. So in the interim, to have some other input, there's no reason not to get more input. But at this point, I guess I'm the only solid one that's going to be here for that decision. Hopefully, it's going to be made in the next two years.
It'll be made, he'll be here.
But he needs a little more information, Ward's got his mind.
Yeah, again, as long as it's not just a single statement, it's a little bit of what the pros and cons are, how much the city's put into the project, what the context is.
I have changed my mind before.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm looking at you because, like, you know, I don't want an extrapolated process. And like I said, I can go out and I can contact people, but...
Well, I don't want to go out and ask everyone, right? Your questions are specifically to employers and employees within the city of Aspen. That's a targeted feedback loop you're asking us to look at, so we'll put together some thoughts about how to do that. So this is not Aspen community voice or anything like that. This is facilitating some of those conversations, which might be with some boards and commissions, but I think we need to be reaching out to ACR as the primary representative of the business community as well. We'll figure that out and plan on coming back to you. When, for planning purposes, does the project team need to... When, for planning purposes, does the project team need to have a dec- decision so you can finalize your sales communications?
Well, we, we were gonna start, um, as soon as we kind of have a date where we can start actually marketing these, we are gonna go back and tell everybody that they need to qualify thirty days in advance. Cause we want, we don't want two hundred applications at the last minute for us to go through. So, we wanna do that upfront. So, I would say, um, when, once there's a kind of a drop dead date, we, when we can start to actually advertise, we go back like thirty to forty days prior to that. That should be soon enough, I would think.
Okay, so we have time. We have time for this to, to gather that input and bring it back to the new council for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. So, last April, we were, uh, looking at pretty much this same chart, but we were asked to move a couple few unit, units, uh, down to the category two level, which we've done in this table. The results are that category two went from twenty percent to twenty-three percent of the total. This is consistent with the numbers shown with the two thousand twenty-two market study, which we did for the Lumbee Yard, but which had a for-sale component. So, this is consistent with that. I guess the only exception is we've slated out a few more category five units here than we sold in the past. I think eighty-two units at Burlingame Two, we only sold, and we took all, anyone who walked through the door during that process, if you recall. We looked at who walked through the door and we categorized the units based on who showed up in that pre-sales process. We sold six category five units out of eighty-two. So, this would, uh, attempt to sell more category five units. We've heard in recent years that the need is not getting less and less, it's getting more and more. So, we are hearing from more category five people in terms of need lately. So, this would sort of line up with that. In the event that, uh, we don't sell eleven category five units, they would default to category four.
Well, category four people can bid on category five. So, you're gonna hit both those markets.
Yeah. So, while we are, we do have a, probably maybe three or four more category five units here than that market study showed. If they don't sell the category five people, there'll more than likely just be more category four units available. So, it's, it's slightly flexible in that way, um, responds to, uh, the request to increase the number of category two units.
Cindy, can you just refresh my memory? We've had a number of conversations at APCHA about income limits. We've raised them for requalifications for wage inflation, but for sales units, the categories are the categories, right? Category four doesn't actually mean a hundred and twenty percent of category four, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I was supportive of moving more categories down, but I think having a few more category fives with what wage inflation has done over the last year probably makes sense.
I'm fine with this, I appreciate it.
Well, a- along the same lines of that conversation, how does it impact category two? A lot of the conversation that we've been having lately is about, uh, income levels and, you know, uh, affordability. Are, where are we with this? I mean, are, is APCHA currently in talks about any changes to?
We.
Categories tend to go up a little bit by inflation every year for income, roughly. But it's not, it's not a big twenty percent jump or things like that, you know?
We, we haven't gotten the information yet for increases of weight, of, um, our, in our categories yet. We get that in April, we'll know whether they're gonna stay the same or they're gonna go up. Right now, we don't know. I do know that the, some of the units that we have at category two, they're hard to fill for two working household, two people that are working full-time. Uh, category two is a little bit easier than category one, so, um, and then a three-bedroom, um, which you have to have at least one dependent. Those will probably, at category two, be a little bit easier to fill. The only thing that we've heard is we've heard some category two families at Burlingame that they've been concerned with the HOA dues. And that's the concern when you have to look at somebody's income as the HOA dues, cause they keep going up and up and up. So, that, that's been more of a concern, I think, that we have seen with regards to the HOA dues versus them getting a, a mortgage. And we also know that the interest rates are going up. So, more, they, um, their payments are gonna be more than what they would have been if we'd done this a couple of years ago.
Cindy, are we gonna make those adjustments to the category numbers prior to the first round of these or after?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, we usually make them, um, when we get them, we usually, we usually get them like around April tenth. We go, we try to do it as fast as we possibly can, either like two weeks afterwards or May first.
And what's the basis for that adjustment?
I'm not sure what it's gonna be this year. It's, we get all the, uh, that information from CHAFPA and, which gets all that information from HUD. And they come out.
But is it based on AMI?
They're based on AMA, AMI. All the new AMIs.
That's all I was asking.
And the rentals come out in around April tenth, something like that. I look every day now to see if they'll come out.
It's exciting stuff.
And somebody who qualifies for a cat two unit now, as their income level rises.
Theoretically rises with AMI, but doesn't always work that well around here.
You do not have to requalify once you've qualified and bought a unit. The hope is always that you'll.
You're in there.
You know, maybe be interested in bidding on a bigger, better unit once you have more income, but.
Gonna buy a West End house, right?
Yeah, as the, um, income changes, the categories have been escalating a little bit so people don't get price out of their particularly rental, uh, category one and twos because they get a raise. My concern is not so much on the, the high end as the low end. I, I'm, category three, uh, or category two, three-bedroom with HOA dues, I, I question the ability for somebody to, to be able to afford that and to, to allocate four units for a three-bedroom category two. To me, I, I question that. I look to you guys for the answers, but it just seems like those, uh, uh, the amount that they're gonna be paying for a mortgage plus HOA dues at a category two income is, um, is invitation for being, uh, housing challenged.
Yeah, you know, um, you bring up good points and it's hard, I think, for us as a board. Uh, maybe I'm a little familiar on Skippy, but we're just looking at those categories without income to say, how much are you earning, you know, next to them, you know? But what I'm gonna suggest is rather than debating it back and forth here and now, is maybe that's something we can ask for APCHA a little more, uh, detail work on. Are we putting too many category twos in, given the costs between anticipated HOA dues, which you'll have some sense of what you think they should be, and, um, the cost of a mortgage for eighty percent of the cost of the unit, if they have a twenty percent down? And, and take a look and see how real it is. You know, I hate to price them higher in the sense that, um, you know, interest rates might not always be this high and they might be lower and people refinance and things like that. But I, I, I think it is reality today, today, so, uh, that doesn't concern me. The, um, other thing that might be worth bringing back to the future council as things really finalize is, um, it's noted in here that these are all priced at the max of category two or the max of category three or the max of category four. You could always price some of your category twos in the mid-range of category two, rather than the max. And so then, they'd be a little more affordable for people trying to get that mortgage. I know that changes your subsidy numbers, Chris, but that can be done. They, you know, I, I was thinking about that fact myself, just going, well, wait a second. If this is priced at category three max and I buy it and then I'm there for two years, I can't sell it, 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 you know, will category three people still really qualify to buy it? Cause it's now priced above category three, I mean, it's starting at.
You should be able to, because the way, the way the incomes were set.
They'll keep going.
It wasn't that, it, that whoever could afford that, that wasn't the max that they could get. It was kind of in the middle.
Okay.
But when I first started working for the Housing Authority, when the city sold their units that they developed, they sold them at the middle of what the maximum could be sold.
So, they could rise a little with inflation and time without getting, and you know, you don't have to sell them at the max, you're allowed to. So, that might be another way to accomplish this a little bit more, Ward, is for some of the category twos to sell below max.
I appreciate that solution.
When we talk about affordability, nobody else talks about this, but I always talk about this and I have to. When we look at the area median income buckets in a HUD project, federally financed project, it's forty to fifty percent area median income, fifty to sixty, sixty to seventy, seventy, eighty. The width of our income categories, category two is fifty percent of area median income up to eighty-five percent area median income. It's a much wider bracket. If you're at the top of that income level, your total housing payment is gonna be less than thirty percent of income. If you're, you're at the very bottom of that very wide income bucket, you're gonna struggle with housing payments. A two-bedroom unit at Burlingame Ranch Phase Three, the HOA dues for the condominium association plus the master association are gonna be approximately four hundred and forty dollars a month. For a three-bedroom, approximately five hundred and forty dollars a month. If you're at the bottom of your category two income bucket and you're paying five hundred and forty dollars a month, it's gonna be a difficult reach in addition to a six-point-five percent interest rate. People have to put on their big person pants and make those choices as to what they can afford. And we should help them do that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, if you make the choice to lower some of those category two sales prices, it's your choice to make. But the width of those income buckets is the result of our legacy system having these wide buckets. The sales prices could be made to match for ten percent in- increments. Just like your rental prices could. We brought that up before, we know there's no movement on that, just have to point that out because federally funded projects usually get pegged by those ten percent increments for this reason.
Yeah, you know, it was a long time ago when I was on council, when we were making projects, as Cindy said, and we would price them in the middle of a category to address that kind of same thing you were saying. We never, developers doing their project, they would go for the max, they'd get every dollar out of it that made their pro forma work. We understood that. And I, I think the only hesitancy you're hearing up here has been just from me, the experience with APCHA trying to fill the low-income tax credit units that sit empty for, for months at a time and, and they only really work with our requirements if it's a single parent. Because everybody works two jobs.
Yeah, those, those incomes for our, our low-income housing tax credit properties are much lower.
Yeah, much lower.
Than what we have for our, our regular category units.
Again, I'm happy with the mix that you've presented. I, I'm not asking for any changes, but, uh, and it's good to know there's some flexibility if we end up with categories that are undersubscribed at the end of the day.
Good. We were asked to, um, work on a right sizing pilot, um, that would provide incentives for households with an unoccupied bedroom to downsize. Here's what we came up with, that we could offer those folks, um, a priority lottery bid that would essentially put them to the front of the line. That would say, you know, getting that empty bedroom occupied is worth it to put you to the front of that line. That will make some people unhappy, we know, but we're trying to do two things, fill these units and backfill unused bedrooms, right? You would still have to meet occupancy requirements, um, and we would allow up to five-unit sales under this pilot. Although, I did think it was interesting that when we were just looking at the town of Snowmass Village stuff, they have downsizing priority built in.
Yeah.
To their lottery priority to the tune of up to twenty-five percent of the units. In our case, that would be some twenty units for this project. We were asked for about five units. The resale of the unit owned by the downsizing household would be sold through a typical APCHA resales process. The buyer would be required to meet the occupancy standards, uh, and other APCHA regulations so the, the empty bedroom would naturally get utilized. Skippy?
Two, two questions. Uh, first, on the community benefit piece, up to five otherwise unused bedrooms, why? I mean, they could be downsizing two bedrooms per unit, potentially.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay. Uh, and then, the only question is, how do we choose which five?
Well, it really comes a matter of X many people coming into APCHA who want to downsize.
So, just first come, first served.
Yeah, you know, I was gonna say, I.
Oh, by lottery.
Yeah. I don't know if you've, uh, talked this through with Cindy and, and Matthew, but I think when the requests came from the APCHA board to us, as city council members, to you, and city council, there was a little bit of a sense of, oh, well, they'll just set these five units aside or those five units will be available. But it, it made it, you made it sound like these people will be given more lottery chits and they'll still go into lotteries for these units, but they have a better chance of winning. Is that how you're describing it or I'm?
I think it's like a first lottery.
We're, we're describing it with more flexibility than setting aside some particular units in that we could do this up to five times. So.
Wherever they show up.
You know, if they show up for a lottery in building eight or if they show up for a lottery in building fifteen, um, you know, if we've already sold four of these and you're, you're applying in building fifteen, there's still one more available.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm, I'm just not understanding. I mean, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with, but, so you're, you're saying that people who come in and are ready to downsize and now we know there's a downsizing family who wants a two-bedroom, they'll be able to say, I want the, the two-bedroom in building ten. And the next one, we'll say, I want the two-bedroom in unit eleven or building eleven. It's not, it's not that, uh, they compete in the lotteries with more chances.
Not more chances, but if you're bidding, uh, so rather than the government deciding what unit you get, you get to decide what unit you want to bid on. But when you bid on that unit, you're being prioritized to the highest degree. So, you're naturally at the front of the line unless there are two downsizers who are both bidding on the same unit.
Okay, I see it.
In that case, they will just go by lottery.
Okay, I understand now.
I'm comfortable with this as is, my only request, and again, I won't be around, but, you know, if the five takers happen very quickly, it would be great to come back to this board since the lotteries are happening in sequence and just give a brief about what that looks like. You know, what the categories are, how many bedrooms are being gained so that there's an opportunity to expand or keep the program, but at least so people have information about what, which type of units are being, um, utilized for this.
Yeah.
And, and I think that that's something that we're gonna kind of feel out because we are taking forward under public com- under public hearing, a change in our regulations, that we have added a right sizing pilot program to our regulations. But where it's where a buyer and a seller, like, the like, they, they kind of find each other. Where we're a household of four and we're in a two-bedroom unit, you're a household of two and you're in a four-bedroom unit. We're gonna swap. But there's, they have to do it through us, there are certain criteria. One of the things that we're also allowing is the household that's downsizing. If there happened to be a category four, they can go into a category three. They can either go down one or up one. If you're right sizing up, you have to meet that occupancy level and you have to meet the category, the one down or the one up. So, if you're category four, you can go for a category four, category five.
Well, and, and to that end, that program is designed to be both wide and limited to start to understand what incentives people actually want.
Exactly.
And so, to that end, as people come forward for these five, or if they come forward for these five, that entrance interview of, why did you come for these? Is it cause they're new? Is it cause they're ADA accessible? Is it because you have, whatever it is, like, I think that's the information that I would like to come back to this board so we understand or they understand, or however I use the word on there, um, what's really going on.
Right.
Yeah.
Ward and then Rachel.
Yeah, a couple of concerns with this. Certainly appreciate that, that we're approaching the underutilized bedroom aspect of this. And, um, I'm fully supportive of that. I'm, I'm looking at a scenario perhaps where somebody's in possession of a three-bedroom unit that is thirty years old and they're looking to get a two-bedroom that's brand new. And certainly for, um, I think it's on page seventy of our packet, that the qualifications are, and these, I think, are new, um, qualifications, that there's an inspection for, uh, the condition of the, of the unit. that there's an inspection for the condition of the, of the unit. That, in, you know, full disclosure, disclosure of what, what might be ahead for perhaps an assessment for making units in the HOA livable. If their, if their livability issues, the condition of the units has to be really fully, fully appreciated. And then, I think it's perhaps on that same page, that to waive retirement savings against asset cap, and that's something that would just be for, for these units, is that something that APCHA has been looking at to?
The right sizing pilot, yeah.
Just the right sizing?
Just the right sizing.
And it's basically, it's the downsizing part because a lot of the people who are in the bigger units are retired. And what's pushing them into a higher category is their retirement fund that they have to live on for the rest of their lives. So that's one of the reasons why we were, we put in there to waive the asset for the downsizing household.
And so my question is, is that, is that, are we penalizing people not just for the downsizing, but for purchase in the, in the regular market? Are we penalizing people for being physically responsible by having a retirement program? And has APCHA been looking at waiving that for all purchases?
In some respects, yeah. Not that we're looking at it, but in some respects, yeah, if you have more money and assets saved, it counts against your category.
We only take sixty percent of somebody's, if it's an actual retirement fund, we only take sixty percent and then use that as their asset. And we, the last few, couple of years ago, we really increased the amount of assets somebody could have. So we upped that a lot. Plus, we still take only sixty percent, trying to deal with the people who are, who do, who are really good at saving and that they have a good retirement fund. But some, they have lots of stocks. They have millions of dollars in stocks. And for us to not include assets is doing also a disservice to our program.
Yeah, you know, that's what I was just going to say is that this is really about potentially enticing people to move who don't have to, who have an empty bedroom that's excess. And you're right, they maybe have the mortgage all the way paid off and, and no, nothing other than maintenance and HOA. And they may have to take out a small new mortgage for this. They may not. You know, we're hoping that they don't, that they can, you know, kind of do a switch with their equity and get in there, and that's the reasons they'll want to do it. But there's probably, I'd say, a hundred little things that can hold someone back from wanting to make this move, you know, at all. And we don't know if anyone's going to want to do this at all. When it comes to the unit that they're selling, depending on their deed restriction, there will only be so much that they can be required to do to upgrade before they leave. So it depends on their deed restriction and the unit. So even though there's an inspection and there's discussions over, yeah, you have to have some allowance for new carpet and the walls need to be paint-ready and this and that, it's not like APCHA can say, well, you have to put thirty thousand dollars into your HOA because it's so underfunded or anything like that. I mean, there's just very big limits there. So you really are making accommodations for people who already are in the program, who you want to entice into doing something different and that is moving. And I can't even imagine what would take me to move everything out of my house after thirty, forty years. And free up bedrooms and try to create this benefit to free up the bigger bedrooms and get people into the right size. But you have to ask, what are the assets for anyone buying new the first time around? Because you don't know if they have a trust fund. You don't know if they could afford free market. You don't know anything. And so you have to have the asset limitations for the categories to work for first purchase.
I guess more narrowly on the top of seventy-one, waive retirement savings. And I guess I was implying that that was restricted funds that couldn't be drawn upon until retirement age or fifty or sixty-five or whatever.
I don't think we've looked at it that way, but more that it's, it's, and that's one of the reasons why we're calling it a pilot program, the right sizing pilot program that we have also in our regulations. We want to see what entices people, what brings people out to do this, or what doesn't. And then maybe we have to tweak it to see if we can make it even a better program. Using, using Burlingame Three with brand-new units, is that what is really moving into a brand-new unit? Or I really want that neighborhood. It's, looks like a great neighborhood. They've got a lot of green and they've got a lot of parks and stuff like that. Does that push it as well? So I think garnering information from this pilot program and the one that we're putting in our regulations is really, really important to really keep hold of all that information, bring that back to our board, and then bring that back to city council and the board of county commissioners.
Thank you.
And Ward, I think that item was mentioned in the memo as a potential alternate. If you wanted to try to, you know, induce more people to downsize, maybe there are some things that you could do to try to induce more people. Again, they're already in the system.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
They're already going to be qualified to retire in that unit. And so it wouldn't be opening that up to all buyers who are entering the system only as a further inducement to get people to downsize.
So these would be new deed restrictions as they move in, and whether the retirement was four years previously?
It's ten years now.
So that has, the person has to real, how does that work if a person has only lived in their unit for, they have to live in the new unit for ten years or the total program?
The total work history, whether, regardless of whether they, where they've lived.
Okay.
And haven't bought the unit. Yeah, no, it's pilot.
My only question, and you've probably already thought this through, is timing of sales. You have somebody that, current owner of a unit, wants to take part in this downsizing program, wants to move, but what are the mechanics behind timing of selling the current unit they're in versus purchasing a new unit?
Oh, half the buyers at Burlingame are going to be in that dilemma?
Yeah, that really relates a lot to us not having this known timeline. A lot of people are going to be put in a difficult situation where they have to all of a sudden hurry up and figure out how they're going to time the sale of their existing unit, move into a new unit. It's going to be difficult with this short timeframe for a lot of folks.
Because even, because we're going to get people who win the lottery that already own. And we do have people ask us all the time if they can do a same-day closing. We hate them. Literally hate them because the person moving into the older unit doesn't, they don't get a chance to really look at it, make sure it's clean, make sure the stuff that the person said they were going to do gets done. But the banks are usually pretty good at working with them, that they will do some type of a second mortgage or whatever, that when they do close, that's paid off and then it's all set.
Okay, appreciate it. Any other questions here?
Well, just a kind of a thought, and I don't have a firm up or down on it. But is it worth prioritizing if you end up getting fifteen people wanting to downsize and we have five units? That who's giving up the most bedrooms? Who's freeing up the most bedrooms?
I don't know.
You know, I'll just leave that for legal minds and others to think about whether they should prioritize. But it is somewhat likely with these being new units, that, and some of the other things, that you're going to see a number of people willing to do this. And I'd love to get a four-bedroom down to a two-bedroom as much as a three-bedroom down to a two-bedroom.
And just for future conversation on that.
Down to a one-bedroom.
Yeah, I mean, that's, at the APCHA board, that's been the conversation is net bedroom gain, right?
Yeah.
NBG.
Which is interesting about this project because almost fifty percent of them are three-bedroom units. If this is wildly successful.
Yeah. Well, we'll get a few more three-bedrooms, but, you know, that, we have a lot of people raising families in one and two bedrooms right now who would love to have a bedroom for their child.
So what I'm hearing is to continue with the five units out of the seventy-nine for this purpose. And you have a general principle of how, how it will work. And that staff will continue to refine that with APCHA over the next several months before publishing the, the sales packets information.
Is it five units or five bedrooms?
The.
Five units.
It is, five units are available for right sizing. There should be a minimum of a five-bedroom gain. Utilization gain, not physical bedrooms, but five, a minimum of five empty bedrooms that then become occupied through the process.
Yeah, could be more. The only note I would make on that, Sarah, is we may want to get the information out about light right sizing before the general sales packet because the decision to move from your current residence and look at your finances and think about whether you can do it or not is very different from people who don't have a residence, who know they have their down payment, and they're just trying to get into every lottery. And so it just takes a little more lead time, I think, for people to realize, do I want to apply for this right sizing program? Do my partner and I both agree we could live in a smaller space, you know? What's this place really worth? You know, I mean, there's a lot of details that people choosing to right size might have to have more time to consider than just people bidding on their first home. That's all. They can give them a little lead time.
All right. Anything else here?
My last comment is I liked the Snowmass qualification of fourteen hundred hours. I've spoken briefly about this before and, you know, as we go forward, I'd like some consideration or discussion at some time, but nothing now.
That's a board issue.
Thank you, guys.
And I have one. I have one other thing, though. In, in our packet, it looks like you guys are all packing up. Are you done with, you're down to question and discussion? I just wanted to say I do support the item that's going to be coming up on our agenda for tomorrow night for the additional funding to finish this out. That's mentioned in the packet as well.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody had any questions about that aspect.
And to clarify, that is not in your packet tomorrow. The first reading of spring supplemental will be with the new council on April eleventh.
Sorry, I thought we had it. Sorry.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. One more item.
Oh, yeah, almost there. I know.
Harry, stop riding your bike up and downstairs, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Although the fall is probably worse.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks a lot for your patience.
No.
I think he answered one question.
He had a laugh. It was a laugh.
I saw his head move and stuff. Utah.
Everyone's in Utah. Grand Junction, Utah, spring break.
Skiing sounds like.
Ready?
I'm ready when you are.
Great.
Good evening, council. Alyssa Farrell, Administrative Services Director for the record. And I'm here in conjunction with Burlingame specifically to talk about the City of Aspen Employer-sponsored Housing Program. My goal tonight is to give you an overview, synopsis of the housing program. You have a lot of materials in your packet as well, and then to ask a question related to Burlingame. So it's a reminder, we have our housing recap. This is the brief agenda. It's a short presentation. A reminder of our total compensation philosophy. We actually have a housing support section. And an overview that we're going to respond for our employee workforce to respond to the high cost of living and lack of affordable housing. It's the similar situation that we're all in as large employers through creative and innovative opportunities to support our employees continuously through the housing challenges. So in 2022, last year, we had a seventeen percent turnover. That's unprecedented. Our target is around ten percent year-to-date. It's around fifteen to fourteen percent, so it still remains high. I think I looked over the weekend and we had twenty-two open positions in my entire tenure, almost twenty years. That is the most positions. It continues to be some of the most amount of positions that we've been hiring for. In our exit interviews, as you recall, and just when we're hiring for recruitment purposes, of course, housing is a contributing factor for recruitment and to turnover, and that has a community impact. If you recall, we did do a 2022 housing survey late summer, sixty percent response rate. And you have this, you have either, what this shows and what the story this tells is those that have figured out housing are doing all right. So in the past six months, how would you rate your stress level about having a secure and long-term viable housing? If you figured it out, you're a ten. You're good. And if you haven't figured it out, you're highly stressed.
These colors are still reversed.
Oh, that's right. That was our same conversation. Yes, that is advanced for me to actually go in and change the colors unless I used a marker. The point is still there. In our current housing inventory, we have sixty-seven units. Current priority guidelines for employee eligibility includes, and keep in mind that we do have some Trescott units in the mix here, and those are inclusive. Those are open to all employees and those are category two and three. Otherwise, and we have transitional housing units. We have our ARC as another kind of one-off where there's a housing unit that's attached and the employees that reside there are required potentially to perform some off-duty work for the ARC facility, similar with Park. However, these are our guidelines, and then we have some of these one-offs too. So for emergency response, that's really employees that are frequently and on a regular basis have to partake and stand by activities. So they have to be immediately or available within a thirty-minute response time or a relatively quick response time, depending on the department and the job duty needs. These are really your police officers, your sworn police officers, your utilities staff, which would be our water treatment facility operators, and your electric line technicians. And it is comprised of around twenty percent of our sixty-seven units, and that ebbs and flows. Again, you have some long-term purchased units, and keep in mind, some of our units are transitional, and then you have some other components such as Trescott or the ARC facilities. You have essential critical recruitment and retention positions. This definition ebbs and flows depending on the market. It may be a position where it's a specific minimum job requirement. I think of our hydroelectric operations specialist. Lord knows, I would not be able to do that job. It's a very defined skill set. Where the position may have been open for nine months to a year, and with that defined skill set, it's increasingly difficult. And then agency director or department head positions too. With, with the question we're talking about tonight, we are focused on emergency response, essential workers, public safety employees. This is a recap of our timeline. You, council, employees, staff have done quite a bit of good work here with our total compensation philosophy adopted by council. The employee housing, housing survey deployed in the summer of 2022. We had two additional housing units approved by council in the summer of 2022. We just finished our two internal city stakeholders developing a city employer-sponsored housing strategic plan. And now we're here in 2023 to discuss adding Burlingame units. So with that in mind, in your packet, we do have two options for discussion. The first one, option A, is development costs without land and infrastructure costs. And you can see the size of one-bedroom and two-bedroom. So the question we're posing, we're asking tonight of council is whether or not council wishes to move forward with up to five Burlingame units for city employees, primarily for essential public safety employees. And then you have option B, development costs, including land and infrastructure costs, and then the one-bedroom and two-bedroom options there. And I've been here a while and I think of a past city manager. And I've been here a while, and I think of a past city manager who explained the housing program, the impetus for it of, how he explained it to me was, we didn't have any police officers, any sworn officers, no one was available in Aspen to respond to any emergency. Zero, none. And with that, that was the creation of our sixty-seven units in our housing program today.
What category are these again?
So, real quick, before we answer the question, a really key piece to know is that these deed restrictions are managed by the City of Aspen, not by APSHA. And those deeds, because that deed restriction is specifically tied to the employment of the individual in the unit. So this is not a unit you can stay in if you were to separate service, or potentially even separate service in the category of reason you were put in it. So if you're a police officer, and that's how you were able to get into one of these units, you chose to, you chose to not maintain your status as an officer, but perhaps you moved into a community resource officer in the department. You would lose your eligibility for the unit, just to clarify how that works. It is truly only workforce housing, not community housing in the city's program, thank you.
In, in terms of categories, as Sarah mentioned, we, this is not APSHA, so except for the Trescott units, the categories have fluctuated.
Well, I guess my question is, what category unit from the thing that we just saw would this be displacing? Or are these not on that graph?
We would, we would work to, to work through that list to decide where that happens, but it's a total of, we're asking for five. And so you can direct us, if there's a particular category you would prefer that occurred in, if you go forward, thank you.
Yeah. I understand that this seems like a difficult decision, because it'd be so nice to throw all seventy-nine units into the major lottery, which we're not doing classically, because we're also using some units to attract downsizing, five, which is appropriate. I'm very supportive of this proposal because of two reasons, maybe three. But one is that I think of the city as a business. How many times do people say, can't government run like a business? Well, business runs by making sure it has its positions staffed, and we have critical issues that we need to staff. So I just simply have to, as a responsible party, helping to manage the city and deliver the services that the community desires, wants, and needs. The second is that I really kind of like the option B, I would only support option B. I like the three and fi, three and a half million dollars coming back into the general APSHA fund, a housing fund, to be able to make housing for the general lottery. This is, this is paying full truck, you know, with infrastructure and land costs. And I absolutely think that's the way we should go here, because that is the example for other future public-private partnerships, and that is the example for any employers buying into programs that we may be able to create in the future. That you, with city, paid the infrastructure costs and land costs when we bought units as a business. And if you would like to buy into projects, should that happen in the future, whether it's a lumberyard or somewhere else, the example has been set that the city already paid for land costs and infrastructure, and that is what other business interests will need to do when they buy in. I mean, maybe a future council will say, no, we'll subsidize the Ritz-Carlton and let them, we'll give them the land costs and the infrastructure, or maybe they won't, but I think we should at least set that example here. And I look at the three point six, just about million dollars going back into production of future units to whether it's the lumberyard, or whether as a new council and a new housing retreat, we start divvying out some different pots from that development fund, and maybe there's a pot that's more about incentives for HOAs rehabbing their units and low-interest loans, and maybe there's a small pot that starts to support regional efforts that we're involved in. And then the rest is available for land banking or moving forward with our partnerships on lumberyard. So I just see a win-win-win here, I just see us able to serve the community better. We see us able to create more units going forward, and those are the two things I see as the real examples. One last kind of comment on this is, I've talked to other agencies, other districts, and you know, particularly at this housing forum, we were just at the Basalt School teacher, our representative was talking about the housing problems they have, and the number of units they have for rentals, and I have repeatedly talked to the school district, hey, why don't you get some state legislation changed, so you can start selling those units that you've already built? And, and buy back, and then you'll, you'll have so much more money to build more units, you know, instead of keeping them all as rentals. And the owners get a little equity, they get to check the box on their application that they own, they don't rent, you know, things like that. And so there's ways other agencies are coming at this, but the point is also that nobody who's new in the community can get a unit because they don't have the four years. And so I've always thought, whether it's Aspen School District employees, or Rafta employees and Rafta housing, that once hospital housing, once they've developed their four years, they can start to bid in the APSHA system and move out of the housing we've created, and they have an opportunity to get a not-job-related unit. But to get that first four years of priority, you know, whether you're living at Haseman Valley Hospital's housing, or whether you're living at the Fire District's housing, or whether you're living in the City of Aspen's housing, you won't have priority in the APSHA lotteries, you know? And so this is a way that we can bring people in, recruit very difficult people, and give them the time to build that four years of residency to get into the top priority for lotteries of the general pool. And help them move along, I mean, I think if anything, that's something the city should try to really promote and offer a moving bonus of two thousand dollars if you ever win an APSHA unit, and you can move out of a city unit, something like that. But again, those are the reasons why I would support this, I think it's a reasonable request. And I think that if we don't do this, we're going to need to take, that's five units, over a million dollars, we're going to need to take five million dollars out of the fund and go and buy them in Snowmass Brush Creek, or buy them maybe somewhere else further away, because we're going to have to buy units. And we did that this summer on the free market for well over a million dollars each, so that's just how I look at it, thank you.
It's Rachel. Did you have any other discussion that you wanted to bring up before council weighs in on it a little bit?
She already threw option A or B at us.
Well, I'll start off with the good news, I'm for option B if we do this. I've been conflicted about the 505 fund and prioritizing city employees from the very get-go. I, I'm, we're up here wearing two hats. I mean, we, we have to make sure that the city has the services it needs. We, we're responsible for those, those thirty-minute calls for avalanches blocking both Maroon and Castle Creeks for the myriad of reasons that we need to have these people, and I know what it, you know, what the city's shortages are in staffing. In, in a vacuum, it's, I mean, this is a no-brainer, but it's not a vacuum, and so I, I see this, I don't know how I can see it in any other way, that we are having dual standards. We're having one standard for City of Aspen employees and another standard for the free market. Having one standard for City of Aspen employees and another standard for APSHA-qualified. If that's something that we're willing to do, I mean, if you, and I mean, every time I look at this, I get, I wind up with the same, the conflicting values here. And the two hats that I'm wearing, if we prioritize, we prioritize availability of housing by job function. With the city head, we've got to do that, we have to have the police officers, we have to have these people. We prioritize by what is most difficult job to fill. We have some that we've been trying to fill, fill in ComDev, we can't get them because we can't get housing. Yet in the, in the public and the private sector, in the APSHA side, you have the four-year qualification, you have to be here four years. But how about for the person that is working for the W? Working, and they need a new general manager, they're bringing them into town, and in order to get a, a general manager, they have to give them housing. If they don't have housing, they don't have, you know, they could supply it themselves, but if they don't, then there's a four. I've seen this a number of times with ministers coming, they come into town, they haven't been here four years. In order for the congregation to keep them, they can't buy a unit for the employer. So we really are, I think, creating a double standard. And, you know, a number of times, we've had this discussion, Rachel, about prioritizing on APSHA for, it's a slippery road, where, where is the highest priority, and where do you cut it off? Do you say, well, the person that serves your table has a higher priority than the person that cooks your meal? But if the person that cooks your meal isn't there, the server doesn't have a function. So I'm, I see the value, I certainly see the value of this. And it's just a question for me of how do I weigh in on what hat is the more important to the community? And as much as I hate to say it on the, for the, the APSHA side and for the private business side, and for the general public, I, I do come down slightly on the 505 side, the city employee side, because it's, it's not only a benefit for the city, but it's a benefit for the whole community, and it's needed for the whole community. But I don't make this decision, I don't take it lightly, and it's always been a difficult conversation that goes on in my head. And I don't know if you want to get mixed up in what's going on in my head, but, but I, I, I support this, I question if five units is, is too much, but it is really, it really conflicts me when we start going into this 505, 105, or 150 fund. And what's equitable, what's fair, because we wind up with two different, what's equitable and fair for an employer isn't always the same thing as it is for a city that has to re, has to supply a police force and water and electric and all the other, a city manager and a city attorney and.
Snowplow drivers.
Snowplow drivers and everybody else, you know, seventy-five percent down on the CDOT for maintenance and, yeah, it's.
Yeah, I was going to say, it, it's a little bit like CDOT using our gas tax to build housing for snowplow drivers in Glenwood rather than filling potholes. But they, you can't do one without the other, and that's the boat that we're in. I mean, I don't know that we would have staff to design the next housing project if we can't have a certain amount of staff. I, I'm a little less worried about the Marriott Corporation owning the W and, and what they knew they would need for housing as they've put five hotels up in our valley, you know, that, that, I'm a little less worried about them. You know, I, I've talked about it, I think there's some real opportunities we can have with the lumberyard to, to create new person rental housing, that's for new recruits without the four-year, because we'll have enough units there to create that sort of flexibility. I also think we should look at the Meadowwood City Project we had talked about before. And in order to actually fund it, we know we don't have the money, it's not going anywhere anytime soon, that's why we bought the two units for a million each.
Is it Water Place you're talking about?
Yeah, Water Place, we should have private partners in there, and we should create housing that we're opening up some there, get some city units, but move it along faster to actual production by not making it a one-hundred percent city project. So I think there's other ways we can keep moving this forward. It's kind of like what we're doing right now with childcare workers. We didn't have enough money to buy housing, to build housing that would be housing for childcare workers. We've done that, is it at Trescott or somewhere else, we have a few units, but we, we're giving them five hundred dollars each. It's just like pedaling, pedaling in water, it's barely keeping your head above water. And I don't know what we keep doing, we keep paying people maybe another ten thousand a year, fifteen thousand a year, to try to recruit them here to pay free-market rental prices. I, I just, I, I know exactly what you're dealing with, Ward, it goes around and around and around for me, too. But we sure, we have to have these personnel to deliver services.
You know, I, I agree with that, but I think that in doing this, that we have to be fully invitational and inviting of public-private partnerships, not only for BG3, but for the lumberyard and all, and maybe buy-downs, all, all going forward, that if we can, I, I keep saying, anything that we can build, we can supply that we don't have to pay a hundred percent for, it's, it's a win. It's a win-win-win. So if, if a private consortium of businesses comes forward with three point six million dollars, and they want to have priority on housing, whether it's rental at a lumberyard or purchases at BG3, that we should entertain that and fully look at it. Because that's, those are, those would be units that would be used and useful and needed for the sustainability of our economy. So sustainability of the town and the two hats, the two functions of the hats that I'm wearing. I don't do it lightly, but I do, I do support this, but with option B. And just question if, if we can, can afford to do it with five units.
Is there a number, another, another number you would suggest?
No. I'm having a hard enough time coming up with supporting this in my consciousness, and it's, you know, it's, it's a, what's the demand? Who are the five employees, what positions are those five employees are going to be eligible for these units? That weighs in on it somewhat, too.
Is there any thoughts?
Love your thoughts.
So my first questions are regarding the two-bedroom units, three two-bedroom units are being requested. And secondly, I'll start off, option B for me, if we're moving forward with this. The two-bedroom units, one, I would just be interested in knowing that they would only be utilized for full occupancy. That, that if there's two-bedroom, that we're not going to put a single person in there, you know, and have, and create a non-used bedroom.
It's very rare for us to do that with the inventory, we, you know, sometimes we have to balance it, though, because it could be a single parent who has a fifty-fifty custody arrangement, something like that. So we, we have to be cognizant that that, that situation does exist in our workforce, too.
Yeah, and that, that would be acceptable and for this, I'm talking about.
And they qualify into the number of bedrooms at the time of purchase, because council would no longer let me rent the units that the city controls in Burlingame. And so, again, it would be the household size at the time of qualification for purchase, we can't control what happens later with whether divorces, separations, children graduating, all of that can happen still with a two-bedroom, just like it can in the community program.
And then, as I stated before, there were three-bedroom units, we're almost half of the units that are coming on. Is there a need in this request actually for a three-bedroom unit?
We could, I will tell you, we run into issues with three, with our other three-bedroom out at this particular development, namely, namely being because the dog limitation has been an issue for us in renting that, that unit when we could. We ultimately sold it to a household of four who did not have any pets, but I would say, I am very confident that these five units would be filled immediately as soon as we made them available on that priority system. I don't have a doubt about this, the, the three-bedroom, currently in the inventory, we have a three-bedroom that is just opening up, and we have a four-bedroom that is just opening up. And so I think we have some very limited employees qualify for units of that size. Alyssa, what do you want to add to it? Because that's my initial reaction, that a three-bedroom is probably not what we need out at Burlingame.
I tend to agree with you, thank you, Sarah, and to add on to it, in our survey data, as I recall, it's three-bedroom would be nice, to your point about. to your point about the number of, and Sarah's point, people in the actual unit, the two-bedroom is most applicable based on the survey data.
Hearing the discussion, option B is the only option. I share Ward's concerns, have from the beginning, and I think, you know, I mean, I certainly understand the need, the priority, the benefit to the entire community. I would love to see every single one of our 340 employees, both seasons, living in Aspen, and, you know, I guess I struggle with two parts, right? One is two sets of rules, and so I just hope going forwards, when there are opportunities for partnerships and all the downsides that those include, we start working with one set of rules and figure out what really works for the whole community, whether that's with us or our private business, and defang some of the known downsides, but agreed, it brings additional capital in when it's needed and all the rest of it. So I think that's, you know, that's achievable. My other concern with, you know, 505 fund and 505 in general is just, you know, for future councils, you guys or the next one or the next one, you know, the, the key pressure point that I think drives decisions around how much density, for instance, we want an affordable housing, is the need right here, you know? And so I just get concerned, when it's easier for us than others, we don't feel the need as acutely, and so we don't make the decisions to deliver the housing that's actually needed. But that's philosophical, and this is real, so I guess we're doing option B.
Yeah, and again, I appreciate the struggles tremendously. It's not, not like it's easy, but I, I, I think there's a, a big difference between city market having the meat counter closed for three hours in the afternoon and us not having an electrical worker when we need them, you know? I mean, that's, that's just the unfortunate bottom line to, to, to this, and, and I, I was just gonna more say that I don't think anybody on this council or future council only looks for their input on decision-making as to what they hear from this table. You, you hear from your coworkers, you hear from the businesses you go in. I think the, the need and the pressure point for housing comes from all around you, not just from when you're sitting in the council chambers.
Yeah, of course, and when it comes from the closest areas, the most salient areas, when you want to, like you said, do something at comm dev and there's no comm dev director, I mean, it's just more acute, there's, you know, anyways.
Would there be any more comfort? Would you feel more comfortable with two one-bedroom and two two-bedroom? Are you, are you looking to minimize the impact here? You're, you're, Ward, you, you got heartburn right now, you're reluctant, and I don't see this, this face on you very often. So, so, you know, do we need more work here? I mean, where are you guys?
Well, it's always been that the, the city manager makes the decision, so who goes where in the 505 fund? So I, I have to yield to the city manager to say what we need the most. So I, I, I trust our city manager to put up the, the numbers, the units that are, are needed, and the priority of employee that, in position that we need to attract, and what kind of unit they're gonna go into. So I, I have to, I have to trust Sarah on this. I even had to trust Steve on this, and that was difficult.
Any follow-up thoughts on that?
Five or one makes no difference to me, there were, you know, we're doing it or not.
All right, well, that, it sounds like there is support for option B, and it sounds like five total units?
Okay, and then we will come back about which categories you want those drawn out of, based upon the, the previous chart that Chris provided that showed the unit distribution. That will be the next decision point you need to make.
I think regardless of what the rest of the mix is, we should pull out at the higher-priced units and then use them as we need to use them. I'm, I'm just saying that to keep the pro forma whole for the, the project, that, you know, if, if, if we pull these out and pay for them, maybe it's even a smaller, higher number than the one you have here, I don't know which categories these were priced on, but, you know, we, we can, this board can readjust that mix to say, okay, we, we don't need as many category twos now, or we need more fours, whatever, but I, I think the price that we pay should not be the category-two prices. We should not pay the category-three prices.
Yeah, and that's not what I'm inquiring about, is that percentage of units that are each category level, like 32% are category-twos, and your pro forma right now, do you want me to pull these out of category-two? You want me to pull them out of category-five? Some combination of them. We can do some, to us, it really doesn't matter, because the fund is being, the 150 fund is made whole. It's more a matter of how you're affecting eligibility in the community in the future by taking a scarce resource and narrowing it down even further.
Rachel, all you're saying is whether we end up pulling one from each category, five ones or five fives, we're paying the same higher number? That's what you're saying?
That's what I think we should do.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I see a conflict here in that we, and it's, we have to live with conflicts, but that, we were earlier talking about category-two incomes, we were talking about selling them below the maximum, and here we're talking about selling at maximum. And I think that in answer to Sarah's question of what categories do we pull them out of, I would look at what the initial employee's pay scale is and take them out of that category. The person that fills a two-bedroom...
We'll, we'll bring it back, yeah, it's not quite that simple for us, but we will, we'll put together some options, because there will need to be a vote on the record during a regular meeting to provide direction on this. Thank you.
Thanks. You know, I'll just make a quick statement for myself. I share the conflict that you guys have enunciated here. I, I think we all do. I think we all do. So we're all very aware of this kind of prioritization, and the one thing that, that I really come back to, and you can tell just from my body language, that, you know, I, I still have concerns about it, but, you know, just in this last year, we've had so many community comments regarding streets, comm dev, the work that our community wants done, and our organization, as has been pointed out, serves our entire community. So, you know, I keep coming back to that. This is, this is a different discussion. This is community-serving. This is not for the ease and accessibility for hiring. That's not what this comes down to. This comes down to our service levels. And so, you know, I recognize that if this were an issue or problem to continue to get worse, the entire community would feel the impacts there.
You know, I, I forgot to make this comment earlier, and I think it may help with some of the heartburn, but when we get mitigation dollars for housing, fee and lieu, for whatever reason, we get some of that. We don't segregate that out, we put that right in the five 105 fund. I get the numbers confused, 150 fund.
150, 505.
Yeah, yeah, the 150 fund, so it goes right in there. But mitigation law, whether it's ours or anywhere around the state or anything like that, it's, you're allowed to charge mitigation to, to mitigate the impacts to the service-delivering government. So you could use every one of those mitigation dollars just for city employee housing and not for putting it in the 150 fund, which we do. At the county level, all their mitigation dollars from new growth was going towards employee housing for the counties, and when I was there, I insisted that 50% of it go to units that be available to the general public, and, because we had no other housing fund, and that we had to at least do 50/50. I don't know if that policy has continued, but that's what mitigation dollars, when people pay a school impact fee, or this impact fee, or that, it's, it's for the impact to the organization that's the local government. So, you know, don't feel like you have to have as much heartburn as you have. We've been putting all of our mitigation dollars right into housing that goes out to lottery for everybody, and so to be able to use some of the monies we've saved to pay full costs, including land costs and infrastructure and design work, puts more money back into that broader AH fund, and again, we haven't been using mitigation dollars as, let me say selfishly, as we could as an organization for decades. Maybe we should have. Wouldn't be in quite the same boat.
Any other questions, comments, suggestions?
No further questions, comments, or suggestions. Thank you.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Good, guys?
Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you.
If you're hiring somebody and their income category is four, that you take the unit out of the four that are category-four, two-bedroom that's available. I'm freezing in here today. You don't take them just randomly. I guess it only works in the first round.
Well, I mean, yeah, maybe, but it may be that all...